We've made the decision to go ahead and bring the Eastham School purchase due diligence report order through the first item under discussion items. And just to plug in all of those who are here for that purpose. And with that, we'll go ahead and convene the work session.
Good evening, Wes. Hi. My name is Ms. Eda.
Here.
And Commissioner President Neely.
Good. Has anybody had any future agenda items for the current commission?
Um, I do. Um, I'd like to, um, there's been some discussion, um, recently. And I just thought going through this other, you mentioned, um, but I'd like to have a fuller discussion. And what it relates to is the, um, the effort of the city to work with, um, Metro on having, um, whatever its standards are regarding what they've, um, set up for Beaver Free Concept Plan or if it be reconfigured, rezoned, conform to the Beaver Free Concept Plan. And, and, um, I've never been completely sure about what that's all about. Um, but I think, um, I think I'd like to have a deeper discussion on that.
I, I think that's fine. You should have maybe a part of this here if I wanted to. Yeah, part of this, yeah.
What's the timeline on that?
So just so I'm clear, you want a, a work session perhaps on the Metro plans and how those mesh with our Beaver Free Concept Plan?
Yeah, in terms of the BPI, right?
Yeah, there's layers of fuel that got remanded to us. Right. We're already Beaver Free. And we have to address that somehow. And the discussion I think I heard from you finally was that part of one of the options, and there's actually going to be some Metro hearings on this in the not too distant future, about whether we're going to have a bunch of Metro's prototypes or we're going to have ask Metro to change theirs from one to ours. I'm not sure what all that is about, um, and I'd love to have a deeper discussion about that. Um, and I was wondering, you know, what the timelines are for the Metro hearings on that.
So, um, so right now we have, we have these design types from Metro. And one main finding on the design of the remand from Luba was that, um, the concept plan didn't conform to the design types on the Metro urban design type map. So right now Metro is going through and they're hearing the process. And they're going to change the employment designation on their 2040 map that we need to comply with to match the Beaver Free Concept Plan. So that's what they're going through right now. They're going to start their hearings, um, in mid-December. It's most likely in January, I imagine, um, in order to get through all the information. So that would be then Metro would make that decision to amend their 2040 design type map. And then obviously their decision is appealable, um, through that process. Once that's final, we would come back, um, through the City Commission to make new findings demonstrating compliance with the 2040 map as newly adopted.
I think the issue that I'm confronting that I want to discuss either in a work session in December or beforehand if that's what Metro's hearing schedule is on is I don't know, um, that the commission ever, ever requested, I can't remember during my tenure or whatever might have happened beforehand. And I'm not sure how this city arrived at the decision to ask Metro to change its design type to conform to the Beaver Free Concept Plan rather than us reconfiguring the concept plan according to Luba remand to their design type. I don't know what's preferable. I just, I'm just completely unaware of what the, what the thought processes have been, uh, what the considerations have been. Um, and I think that's a commission decision, um, but I don't know when or how that decision was made. Um, and that's why I want to go into it with some detail.
Well, let me, let me just suggest that maybe we could do a research on that and get back to the council with, um, something in writing for you first. And then if you, uh, get the information you need from that, meantime, Metro looks like they're going to be getting closer to making some decisions too. So why don't we produce that first and then if you still want, uh, if there's a need obviously for more discussion at a workshop or another decision, we can accommodate that too.
All right. I just have one question, follow-up for Director perhaps with Mr. Chronicle. Did the remand go back to Metro or not to us? Or do you know, if you don't know that offhand?
I don't know offhand. It was a Metro requirement, but it was our decision. So we were remanded.
It's just that Metro's the one that's addressing it, not us.
Well, it was a Metro, it was a Metro code criteria that was very vague.
Okay. All right, well, we'll, we'll, we'll hold it. Is that all right?
Yeah, that's fine. I had another item.
Okay.
Um, the other item I have is, um, I'm planning for the, um, retreat in January. Um, maybe I can cover this, um, during the city manager's report. Um, or if, if folks want, that's a, my colleagues are interested in adding an agenda item tonight. Um, I'd just like to kind of get, um, a breadth of what planning has been done so far. Um, and, and, um, see if we can get a conversation going about what we're going to do in January. I don't think it's too soon to, um, start making that happen.
If it's actually too late for us to do any planning, we're ready until now. So, yeah, we've made a few commitments already. So, um, the report's all good and we're also citizens. Uh, it'd be good to have some input from you as well.
Thank you.
Then we'll go into the special items and we'll deal, uh, with the, uh, Eastern School purchase, uh, due diligence.
And tonight I'm here to report to you about what we have learned through the due diligence process of the purchase of the, um, Eastham School process. And there we go. Um, part of this is just a kind of a review to get back on the same page as to what we were looking at. Um, Eastham School is right up the street from here. It sits on almost two point nine or two point nine, almost three acres. The building itself is actually even, um, bigger according to the report than forty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty square feet. I think it's like eight hundred and eighty-seven square feet. It's a very big building. And it was built in nineteen fifty and some portions have been upgraded. The, um, the con, the sales contract which we entered into, um, which is contingent on the due diligence and the rezoning was for four million dollars at an interest rate of four point five percent. At closing, um, three hundred thousand dollars would be due and then we'd make an annual payment of three hundred thousand dollars. And the length of the loan would be twenty years. The last year wouldn't be a full three hundred thousand dollars. And there's a little picture of where it is. And the initial, um, initial concept plan was to remodel, um, at least seventeen thousand, um, square feet. That includes the, um, gymnasium area and that is on the north side of the building towards the, um, seventh street. So upstairs on the north side. And the initial estimate for that remodeling was one point nine million dollars. The remainder of the, um, remodeling would come down the road when we figured out funding source and we did kind of a more programmatic, um, build up on what we actually wanted and everything. And it would, that cost was nine point three million dollars for the remainder of the building. So what we learned from due diligence, uh, one of the big things we learned is that the, the initial remodel estimate, which was at one point nine million, has grown to two point six million. Um, we also learned that the wall between the stage and the corridor could not be completely removed. And I'll have a little graphic of this to show you. Um, and so, you know, we talked about earlier how, you know, this was built as a school and it still looked like a school, which is appropriate. And so, you know, either way you look, you look down a corridor. And what we would be trying to do, of course, would be to remodel so that some of that corridor feel would be gone so that we could, um, have better, you know, sidelines, better supervision, more open feeling to the whole building, et cetera. So the, the wall not being able to be removed completely does make a big difference. Um, the other big thing that we discovered is that, uh, we knew that the, that some of the classrooms couldn't bear the weight of very tall stacks. And we discovered that the corridor could not bear the weight of very tall stacks either. They can bear the weight of short stacks, but not tall stacks. So that does cut down on our flexibility of what we can put there. So that would be initial, that would be additional cost if we wanted to reinforce this.
Can I ask you a quick question? On the seven hundred thousand dollars you mentioned, all these points that you just mentioned about the, um, um, not being able to expand, you know, the, the dim past states and the, the, the load bearing limitations of the, um, classrooms and corridors, is the seven, not, is, is the seven hundred thousand extra cost to get over those problems or, or if we were to try to solve these problems, these would be costs over and above the seven hundred thousand?
Right, exactly. Additional cost, yeah. So, um, so, and I have a graphic that I can show you that as well. Um, twenty-five percent of the cost of the alterations are spent making the building more ADA accessible. And now you understand, hopefully you understand that. If we're doing a rezoning and when we, when you change the use of something, then you have to live up to different code standards than what's currently there. And they've done a lot of things. That's not to like say that there's not a lot of things already done, but we would be held to a different standard and that's why. And then outside as well, um, a lot of right of way that we don't even actually know about the full extent of yet. And that goes into this next thing, which is the city requirements for rezoning. We haven't done all the work that we need to do on this yet. So there's, you know, anticipated that there will be additional costs there. And then there's long-term deferred maintenance that will have to be done. Um, and one of the big things that jumps out is like replacing the boiler. Um, like right now it's working great and it's, you know, a lot of people say that it's most, the one of the most stout boilers they've ever seen. But, you know, it's very old and you can't count on that lasting. And the thing is, is that if we got into the building and then in the next year or two, we had to replace that, you know, that would cut into library operating, um, funds. We are planning for it in the long-term, you know, um, replacement of all the systems like that, but that's that long-term down the road, you know, big plan that we don't have the money for that yet. We don't know where that's coming from. Okay, so let me just show you. Down, here's the, the gymnasium and the hallway. So this, these walls, that's the stage area that currently exists. We were hoping to completely take this wall out and these walls out. And that's just not how it turned out to be. Now this wall over here, this is very thick concrete. That will remain, but this opening here is a very large arch. It could, it could be opened up quite a bit and might even be cool, might even be very cool. And create this little room, where's my mouse? This little room in here, which conceptually we just started as saying like, let's have view the teen book area and the children's book area, right? Um, mouse, mouse, there you are. It's these walls over here that can only be opened up to this, oops, sorry. I got ahead of myself. Now, now we'll go backwards, there we go. Um, she's a gorgulizing.
I know she is.
Oh, beautiful mask.
Yeah, one another. So this opening here, these are walls all the way up to the ceiling. So this opening here is as much as we could like open this up. And, you know, they've done a lot here to show how it could be arranged differently to kind of get rid of that corridor feel, but you still kind of look down and you see that wall. And then these, these are shelves right here. We call them stacks. These are four-foot stacks on this side of the wall. And on this side of the wall, they're the very, very tall stacks that can bear and carry lots of, but loads of books. So the weight bearing system, um, that exists ability comes out to this wall. On this side of the wall, you have to have four-foot stacks or less. And we were hoping that we could put tall, tall stacks all the way out to the other side of the corridor right there. So what that does is it just, it just cuts down a great deal on our flexibility of, of growth, first of all. I mean, you know, this here, that represents the amount of books that we had up at Hilltop. So it just fits, right? So we'd be remodeling something and really not have much room for growth of that type, at least initially. Does that, do, do any of you have any questions about that? And this is, I mean, some of these areas are just conceptual in nature as to where they are and everything at the moment, you know, but this is, this is a very good, uh, idea of a layout, what a layout would look like. So these back here, these are all very tall stacks. Now, just like what we had at the Hilltop, of course, in this building, there's windows. So you don't have the same light problems. You know what I mean? It's a very high ceiling and there's windows. Um, but that's what we'd have to, that's how you'd have to pack everything in in order to have fit what we currently own, which is, you know, more space than Carnegie, but it would be nice to have room for growth. Okay. So the, um, the cost summary is we still have the four million dollar purchase price, just like we had before. The interest works out to a little over one point eight million at the four point five percent interest rate. So that's very close to six million dollars for the property and the building. Um, the remodel is now up at two point six million because of the increase of the seven hundred thousand dollars. The phased remodel, the second remodel, only went up about one hundred thousand dollars, um, which so became pretty close in our estimate at first. So the remodel by itself is at twelve million, very close to twelve million. And you put those together and you come up very, very close to eighteen million dollars. Um, and depending on when we build and all that stuff, I mean, remodeling costs could still rise too because we know how materials go up usually. Um, the cost estimate of a brand-new building without the land, which is an important thing to have, of course, is twelve to thirteen million dollars, just so you have something to compare that with. Um, at Eastham, additional costs would be the downstairs. Um, we wanted to turn the, you know, cafeteria area into a community room and there was even some discussion as we talked about that. There is a kitchen there and everything. We would want to go in and, you know, get new appliances and upgrade some things there. So that would be a whole additional thing. And then anything downstairs, except for systems improvements, is not factored in really to any of these costs whatsoever. So you're, you're left with a very stout building downstairs and you could certainly put books down there. It could bear the weight because it's on concrete slab, but, you know, you've got classrooms and you've got a corridor. And that, none of these costs includes improvements to that. So the pros and cons of this, um, purchase is that, you know, we wouldn't need a bond to get into the initial purchase and the first phase. Now, that's not to say I have every dollar of that remodel amount, but, um, but, you know, it's, it's a lot better than fifteen million dollars. Anyway, and then we do have some room for growth, but as I explained, you know, not as much as you would initially think, um, as far as library growth. And then it's also a relatively quick solution. I mean, we could get in there once we did our rezoning and we could start improving it relatively quickly. The cons are, um, you know, it's not an ideal fit for a library because it's not, wasn't originally built as a library and the building will always have some, some limits. Um, there's going to be some unknowns and liability regarding the building condition just due to age until you really get into some of this, you just don't know. The rezoning process is required and may, I'll cover some additional costs. And then the downstairs is going to be vacant, um, or partially vacant, probably for a very long time, but it would still need to be maintained and heated and that would cost a lot of money as well. Um, and as I just explained, that downstairs would be very difficult to remodel as, because there's a lot of weight-bearing walls down there. And so, um, and that, those ones have not been included, so.
When we're talking about the downstairs, can you be a little bit more specific? Was cafeteria area included in that downstairs area?
Yeah, the cafeteria, um, is included in downstairs, but there's also like a whole row of classrooms and offices and stuff, and I'm talking more about that area. I mean, the cafeteria is an open building and it's got, our open room has got columns in it and, you know, you couldn't take those out or anything, but you could spruce it up. The kitchen would take more work, um, and more expense just because, you know, appliances and stuff like that. Um, but then outside the cafeteria, in order to really use that, turn that space into a functional library space, um, I think that would be, that would be, uh, quite challenging because a lot of those walls are weight-bearing walls and they couldn't really come down.
I'm just asking, but some of the, some of the administrative functions would not necessarily, we call, uh, depend upon a, uh, communication with the, with the clients or the administration.
Right, and that would be, that would be a good place to put stuff like that. Yeah, that's true. So, um, other options would be to build new on a parts that yet to be determined, shorter, long-term lease. Um, but we recommend at this point in time, due to the things that this due diligence process has uncovered, that we do further investigate other options. So, and I have a consultant here that has been through this process with me if you have further questions as well.
I'm going to ask you a question before, I got a couple of things, but some of these things involve negotiations and I don't know what we can discuss in the public versus what we'd have to in terms of property transactions be dealt with in executive session. My question is, can we talk about this not purely freely since we've, you know, this has already come forward for public comment at some point? Do I have an attorney here to give this advice? If you want to take the risk?
This isn't official legal advice. The privilege is worth the wage. So if the commission wants to weigh, you know, wants you to start talking about the closed session material, then it's hard to put that genie back in the bottle. But if you talk about it, you essentially waive the right to go into executive session to talk about that.
The item I'm going to bring up is actually, I mean, quite part of public record anyway. Um, we, I mean, we had an assessment made of the property's value, which was, um, quite a bit less than the, what was it, four point two?
Four million is the sell price.
Four million, and we had a different assessment of about two point nine or something?
Two point nine was the earlier appraisal.
Yeah, it, it's just a question of, and I realize that dealing with these monies, some of this money you need upfront and negotiating the price and so forth can all be dealt with that, with that way, but this is something that we can explore with the school district itself, is willing to look at a renegotiated price space upon these issues that, yeah, it's not going to be our needs, needs as, as much as we hoped it would.
Um, I'm sure we could ask. Yeah.
I just got to get back to, please follow this.
You look like you said what you meant.
Yeah, that's all. Don't move, move down the list.
One of the things that, um, when we were discussing this, was it six months ago? Is, uh, that we haven't touched on tonight is that some of that building is presently leased out. I thought both floors were to two different entities and, um, I kind of thought maybe that income would have been factored into this. So are you saying that that downstairs, you don't want to rent, you know, that that isn't the way you see this for a long-term or?
Well, um, I thought it would be long-term until you could do a bond finish. Right. Um, there were, there were two, um, school entities that were, were in that school at the time this all started. One has moved over to the, what's the name of the school?
Hart Place.
Hart Place School, yeah. And then the alternative high school is still there. And, um, I just very, very briefly talked to that, um, the person who manages that program. And he indicated that he would be interested in staying, but only if, if he could stay in upstairs rooms. Um, and that might work out okay. That might work out fine and he would want a long-term lease. And so, um, I mean, we could factor, we could factor that in. I hate to kind of count on that because then you're, you know, um, yeah. But I mean, we could, you know, that, that's a possibility that, yeah. He doesn't want to go downstairs, so he did tell me that.
Uh, we're more informal in a, in a, in a study session, um, is your, your question?
Um, when we embark upon a new, um, um, consideration of other sites, do you have any thoughts on the timeline and the process for that?
Well, we would jump right on it. I mean, we'd have to jump right on it. And I'd want to do like a really complete survey with like a, a, you know, a, a graph and some criteria so that, you know, we gave you guys a product, you know, in the next like four to six months or something that could really clearly show what our current options are and just be really, really inclusive of everything. And then, you know, map out some criteria that would help us all make really good decisions based on, uh, what we find.
Okay. Well, I, I like that, that process. Um, the other question I had is, um, how, how is Carnegie working out so far and, and what are the ramifications for the use of Carnegie of this more extended decision-making process? And also how it ties into, you know, we had that big study of Carnegie. And I think this has some ramifications for that too because it, it extends the timeline, um, by which we can consider other options for Carnegie too.
Well, um, the Carnegie is working out relatively well, but I think it depends on who you talk to. If you talk to the library user who is a real browser, then they're, they don't like it. They really want like massive quantities or, that's, that's biased statement. They would like more than what we have to really look at. Um, so what we're, we are taking steps to increase what we have over there because of that. Um, as far as our circulation, we are running at seventy-five to eighty percent of the circulation that we did up on Hilltop. So we feel like we're being relatively successful, but there are certain patrons who, um, it's just, it's a tough sell for them, you know, because we just don't have as many materials for them to look at. Um, there are other drawbacks to the Carnegie, but there are other, you know, pros to the Carnegie too. I mean, it's a great location, it's a beautiful building, people love coming into it, it's light, it's homey, it's, so, um, so it's working out relatively well. As far as staying there, um, that would bump into the citizen task force process a bit, but I'm not sure how much of a problem it creates.
Well, I mean, that's really up to, it's up to you, Commissioner. I mean, uh, the task force completed their process and they gave you a recommendation, which is kind of obviously in limbo at the moment. And I think the task force was, I can't speak for them, for everybody, but I can just say that the general sense that I got was they understand the situation and recognize that the city had limited choices. So I don't, at least the feedback that I'm receiving, which is really not much, is, isn't that there's no sense that their work was just kind of taken and sort of pushed to the side and ignored. They, they clearly understood, they did their job, they gave the recommendation, they know that the library needed a place to be and, and understood that at, at whatever time the library isn't at the Carnegie, if that's the case, that, that then we would, you know, leading up to that, we would have some time to discuss how and if and when and all the different factors of, of that. Is that, does that answer the question?
Um, when you had your three options up there, um, you're not talking about a short or a long-term lease within that facility, you're talking about in, on another facility, right?
Uh, yeah.
There would be no sense in that. And then, um, you know, I don't know if anybody is going to speak to the friends of the library or the library board tonight to address this. I, um, I don't know how much.
Haven't had any discussion on it, so I don't, that's up to them.
Okay, so the next time we'll go around.
I'll see.
Maggie?
Um, I'll just make a couple of general statements, but, um, I haven't been participating in the vote on this because, um, the, the school district, which is my employer, but, um, I've tried to have, I mean, this has taken about a month, this thing, I mean, I, I still don't know what I think about, about the library. And I, I guess the, the, the real problem for me right now on, on, on a broad city level is facilities in general. And, um, I, I think that too much in the recent past, the city hasn't really thought about facilities in a broad sense and has unfortunately made some pretty big mistakes in not doing that. Um, we have a brand-new city hall, um, that is too small, um, that we essentially told the public would fit the needs and would also allow the police department to expand. That wasn't able to happen. Um, the police department is, you know, in fairly good condition, but that was not what we fully anticipated either. And we know we have to replace that building at some point. And we know we have to deal with the public worse. And how are we going to possibly do all that? And, and so it's very, um, I think it's very unfortunate that we've, it seems in the past, we've kind of looked at all these buildings as separate things. it seems in the past, we've kind of looked at all these buildings as separate things, separate pieces, um, by department rather than the whole city and figuring out which buildings we need to deal with first, second, third, and how to really come up with a plan on how that's gonna be done. And, and unfortunately, we're making it up as we grow because things are changing so, so quickly. Um, and, you know, no one wants to delay it any further because we all feel like we need these things now. Um, but I think this is gonna be a huge part of our discussion for our goal-setting for the year. And, and I, I don't think we should be looking at, what do we do at the library? What do we do at public works? What do we do with the police department? We really have to start thinking of this all together. And, um, because we're not gonna go home right now. And, and we really have to think about how we're going to sell this to the public, how we're going to try to figure out what the priorities are and how we're gonna deal with it, because this is gonna be, um, it's gonna be a hard thing to tackle. And, um, so I think it has, has, we have to look broader and that's what's making this so complicated in my mind for, for the library. Because I still see personally a lot of buses for, for the Easton site for the city. Um, a huge amount, especially when you look at the cost and it doesn't include land. Well, at least we know we have the land there, you know, and so if it's, if it's a tempor, if it, and we're looking at a temporary location for the library anyway. So if we have the land and we have a building and it's not perfect, well, that's probably okay, because it's not perfect to where we're at now. Um, and at least that way we have the land to expand on. Um, you know, I was talking, I, I don't really have a, a vote in this right at the moment, but, um, I just think we need to think about all those three buildings, how we're gonna figure that out and, and really think about, we're gonna have to think about options we haven't thought about. Um, maybe consolidating things. Um, so I, I think hopefully that is a major focus and what's on all of our brains for, for the goal session, because I think we really need to figure that out and, and get a plan citywide.
David, you could go on.
No, I will say one, a couple of things. I, I think the, uh, the idea of having a overall facilities master plan for every public building in the city's, um, to meet the city's service demands is a great idea. I, as I understand it, the way this one happened, um, it was sort of an emergency that people didn't see coming. And my recollection is, this was like the big buzz the week I was here to interview for this position. It was, it happened right around that same time. And, and usually when there's a, a sort of a crisis thinking like that, you tend, I think one of the smartest things the, the city did was actually say, we want a due diligence period in here to think about this. And I know it was some heavy lifting literally to relocate to Carnegie for a while. But I think the virtue of that is it takes the immediate urgency. Uh, it's, it's still a, a very important, high priority matter, but you're not inclined to make a, a decision under duress, as it were. And I think that that is a very good thing for the commission. The other thing that I would note is you have a funding source of, uh, uh, you have a certain amount of money allocated to housing the library. That, so you, the reason that's a little bit different, if you wanted to proceed on that as opposed to the police facility, as you know, we just spent a relatively minor amount remodeling facility at the police department to get, to get some more bang for the buck and a little bit more mileage out of that facility for the next couple of years. But the, uh, the library has an identified funding source that wouldn't necessarily require a bond to do it. And, and I think my discussions with Maureen, when we started looking at the amount of the debt service and the amount of money upfront and all the details, like the interest rates and all the things that you have looked at this evening, we, we started wondering about the virtue of building new versus, um, you know, this project. And sometimes there isn't a right or wrong answer really. It's, uh, if this was an easy decision, the staff would have already made it. Uh, so the fun, the fun in being elected official is that the hard decisions are either value-based. You know, there really isn't a right or wrong decision here, but we do want to give you the most efficient space, the best space for the community. And I'm gonna be saying this probably more than, more than you might want to hear, because we do have a lot of facility needs. But to me, if we put our, we put our city behind it, we need to have a building that the whole community can be proud of for decades. No matter what it is we do. Um, and I think our community would appreciate that. They may not have always had that in the past, but I think they would appreciate it and it's something we could all be proud of, working on together. So I, I, with that said, I mean, those are some distinctions to also think about when you're, uh, as you move forward to a decision time, which isn't tonight, but it's fairly close to tonight.
David?
Uh, so Maureen, with the remodeling, how many square feet, or with the total sum of remodeling and, um, what we pay for, how many square feet of a library will we have for that eighteen million? If we stay at Easton?
We would have thirty-five thousand upstairs plus the downstairs, is that right?
Yeah.
Right, and then the whole entire downstairs.
And, and the first phase, how many, what did you say?
Some nineteen thousand square feet.
So the nineteen thousand we can do with the one million from the county and our savings?
Right.
Um, then the next question is, is because, you know, the, we're the due diligence, what's our timeframe to make the next decision?
Uh, November seventeenth of the next.
Oh, boy.
Yeah. Due diligence has been extended a couple of times and it is now, the end of the due diligence period is November nineteenth, which is the Friday after your next regular meeting.
Okay.
And so that would be the night that we would ask you to vote on that.
Awesome, okay.
Uh, let me just, in, in terms of, uh, of what Rocky was saying, um, ultimately, what, what additional city services could be provided at the Easton site? Um, we mentioned, we've got a lot of, we've got a fair amount of space there outside the building itself. And we do have rooms that could be used. Uh, we've mentioned, uh, the concrete planning going into some of those rooms, at least on a temporary basis. Um, which is if we could acquire a site elsewhere, um, would we look for sufficient space to accommodate other city services? I, I think, I think most of us were concerned about uh, locating at Easton because we kind of left the center of the service district when we moved down there. For indication, we had up to eighty percent, uh, of the people who are still coming back, there's, there's.
Well, material, material circulation is eighty percent. I'm not sure we're getting eighty percent of it, but yeah.
Right, okay, and, uh, whether, whether there, you could identify space that, uh, could deal with the more needed services on a central basis, at least being one of them. And it seems the library would naturally be another. Um, trying to weigh all those. We've got a very short time in which to look at this, but, um, the fact that we hit a due diligence period, uh, if we had decided to look for renegotiations after that, would that be possible? For the, for the actual land value, for the, for the parts of the building? We were talking about due diligence being over. Uh, does that close off, I presume that doesn't close off potential discussion for the discussion of the school district?
No, not at all.
Yeah.
Not at all.
Okay. Um, I guess a lot of things that we're gonna have to think about in this process. Um, I, I'm going to, I, I'm gonna invite members of the, of the public, because I think we have people from the library board and from the library here. I, I guess my preference is to focus on issues and questions before us, rather than at this point, uh, suggesting a specific recommendation, because we're not, we're not ready to do that at this stage. But I do want the members of the public to take their specific on the side and to have an opportunity to ask those questions with their own. Anybody wish to do so? There you go, you wanna come up, we wanna hear you. We wanna record your voice.
I'm on the library board also, on the Friends of the Oregon City Library, and a survivor of, I think, at least three task force. Where things should be. And I agree always with Rocky. Um, one of the site committees that I was on, we studied, we did this setup for the library, and it turned into a site study where we evaluated. And the old Keith Brown lumberyard, which is now offices, was one of the sites, and King School was one of the sites. Um, what we call the younger property or Walmart property was probably the one we liked the most. And that was for a whole city center. That was city hall and all the rest of it. Eric. There are some major issues, I think, that we have heard repeatedly about Easton School. And one of the main ones we're being touched on, it, unless we tear it down or do a really major remodeling, it's always really going to be a converted school, because that's the way it was built. If we could look at it in such a way that the property might be suitable for some of the city offices that are cramped now and a little bit of community center. One of the frustrations since I retired and came back home after our temporary hiatus in California for thirty years, we still don't have a community center. We, the library has been pitiful, it is not, but what, nineteen seventy-five, I think, when the analysis was that we undrew it. And we less than doubled the size when we went into a storefront that people couldn't find. You have a terrible decision to make. I'm kind of leaning with Moe, that unless you can come up with some type of additional usage that would save quite a bit of money or enable you to invest it, Easton is probably not the answer. I hate to say that, because I was really excited when Easton first came up. But it does have similar problems. And I don't know of any others. I know people have suggested to me, because I've been on some of the site committees, well, the old high school, high school has even more problems. Um, I mean, I mean, talk about it. Maureen can complain about how many books got wet when they allowed us to store books in high school temporarily. But, um, but we're still, once again, in, in hesitation, because in the past, no one, to my knowledge, in the last twelve years, has really had the resources or looked at the overall needs of the city. It's been hit and miss, and a lot of it has to do with the fact that, quite honestly, the city was in terrible financial straits about eight years ago. And part of that was because the previous commissioners and such never took a long-term look at it. They maintained, we're a mill town and we don't really have to do some of this. We are the mill town and we need to deal with it, and we have people coming in that are starting to expect things from us and they need better services. And I don't know that I gave you any worthwhile input in that. Yes, it's frustrating, as you are having served on all of these different site committees. Easton has been on every list as a potential, but it's never been looked at in the depth that Maureen did look at it. And but I hate the fact of staying in Carnegie for more than a couple more years. People come into the used book store and at first they figure that's the library, because it has windows and it has books, and they ask for directions in the library. And we explain it to them and then they hook us into conversations about Oregon City and the service area for the library. And some of them are quite dismayed by the size of the library, on the feedback that we get. They love Carnegie, it just isn't big enough for a library. I mean, most people, I, actually, I figured that out in about nineteen fifty-seven, when I was graduating from high school. That it was too small then. And then it took, what, twenty years before? Well, then it took twenty years before even moving to Hilltop. So hopefully, you as commissioners will look at it in a long-term basis and figure out, and it may make a good stop, cap major. There's nothing that says most, the majority of the building couldn't be torn down and in the next phase, something built that is really remarkable. It's just to know that the limitations are there if you decide that this is where you need to go.
Of course. Stop that news or what we've been doing with the whole.
We've been doing this, sorry, Maureen, sorry, Maureen. Sometimes necessary. Maureen couldn't give you a good answer.
I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask the commissioners, um, you're, you're gonna give a terribly good direction here and.
Can I?
Yes, please.
Uh, I would have to look at the contract, if he mentioned that, um, he's not sure that we can go back to the school district for any renegotiation after the due diligence period is over. So the next two weeks would be our opportunity, if that's how you're gonna direct me.
I was gonna ask, have him, I, I see you there. I was gonna ask the commissioner if there is a feeling that we need to maybe discuss, schedule another special study session uh, to get more feedback from you, or, or, or are we gonna get any more feedback? The, the one question we're dealing with here is that that due diligence thing may cut off our ability to renegotiate. If there is a feeling of a part of staff or any of us that we needed another study session, uh, I don't know when we fit it in. Unless it's Tuesday before the revision meeting.
Next Tuesday night.
You, you wanna keep that open as a possibility?
Wednesday night before the, we could have a work session Wednesday night before the meeting itself.
Um, we might want the first session a little bit more time before that, so we can think about what we talked about.
An executive session, and if we scheduled as well.
I mean, is, is, is the need, is the staff here, is the media rise, or are you?
I'm amenable to such a work session, definitely.
Okay. David?
Well, um, this is very disappointing news, because I had that, uh, Easton School looking like a, um, the Kennedy School at McInnes and, you know, the cool, no, 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 but, um, a really cool Reju. But, um, I have a couple random thoughts. So, um, as we read in the paper today, Portland Public Schools is gonna go after the biggest school bond, uh, ever to renovate all their old buildings. And, you know, there's so many beautiful brick buildings, that's a neat old building and uh, where is the line of being physically responsible for spending eighteen million for a facility that we could spend thirteen million on? Or twelve and have it work exactly where we want it to versus, um, a kind of a modification? So, um, if you're just seeing, um, out, um, you know, out Candace and I'll fall, uh, for my election, or I talked to a lot of people and many people said, why can't we have a real library? So I, you know, I knew I'd already voted for this, but so it's just a comment, random comments. And then here's the other one, um, a few years ago too, I also, uh, when we were looking at this decision, I did hear people say, well, we don't have a police station, we don't have a library, the library, and there are certain people, you know, they'll have to, that want one and maybe certain people that want the other, and this might be the combo package to get it, uh, to get them all to vote for it. So, uh, there are a lot of choices tonight, it's not an easy decision. I hope I, um, will be able to vote on this again next week. No, it's two weeks, or next week is pushing?
Yeah, yeah, seventeen. Um, I guess, Maureen brings up a bond measure in this economic climate, I just could.
Yeah.
Share, share with the, well, we tried running, we tried running a, uh, fire station bond together with a library bond several years ago and it failed badly. Eventually, we did get a light, a fire station bond passed when we ran it separately. Um, and it's just common on history, but, um, we just have a hard time, but I'll let David Frazier make the comment, because he's next up on the radar.
Uh, so keep in mind that, uh, we do have some resources right now for what we're coming to accommodate the library, as we said in our last time. And also, if we're working a bond measure, I'm convinced that that, taking up the money that, you know, we have, would be a relatively minor amount compared to the fees that are required for the research.
That's true.
So I think what, I guess, what I believe we should do is, if the community has this expectation, we're not gonna, kick this around for two, three, four. kick this around for two, three, four years while we try to come up with some, you know, the invitation from the local commission and public that we live in around nine, exploring whatever alternatives that there are and actually bringing in a four year with recommendations and based on the available financing that we have. Now, we have sub-financing apart from, sorry about that.
We have a sub-financing apart from the summer's financing. So I do think that that is available to us too. We're, have a strong bond rating and we're credit worthy. So I believe that we would be able to obtain some financing to do some, some work on some facility. And then I want to say one last thing about the next work session you folks mentioned. I'm not sure what it is we would, I'm not sure if it's a work session that we would need or if you want to consider another executive session if we get additional information from the seller or some new information comes to us that we think might be part of your closed session discussion. And we could bring that to you in a closed session. Short of that, if we have another work session, is there something specific that the commission would like from staff to prepare for that?
The one thing, when you mentioned the differential in the price of building the library versus Easton, that did not include the land price. And I think if you were locating any place central to the city, it should be my preference if the land price and sure be not a minor component. I, I think we're gonna leave it up to you whether you have new, new information that requires us in terms of property transactions or somebody coming to an executive session or another study session. I think that, you know, we'll leave that up to you in terms of how we look at more information. I, I just, I just don't feel comfortable with what we have before us to go and make a decision on the seventeenth. But it sounds like you have to make a decision on the seventeenth. And we may need another meeting of some form to make me feel comfortable.
Well, in the meantime, if there is some new information that you feel would be helpful, let us know. We'll, we'll have that. Otherwise, we'll come back here with the same, the same information we have tonight.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
And of course, Eric spoke, was there anybody else in the audience who wish to comment on the library? Okay, with that, we'll go back to our original. Yeah, request for a five-minute break, that's fine. If we do that for a while. City Commission rules of procedure, I, I, I'm gonna say that, I think it's fine to discuss this, it's a draft document. I do believe that this should be passed by the next commission on by the court. And having said that, I, I have no problem discussing what's in here as a draft document. I think we've all had a chance to look at it and have comments on it. So if we proceed on that basis, okay? With that. City manager, do you want to start saying something?
I can kick it off. I, I think that, I'm glad you said that because I was going to if you didn't. The, the best thing about rules of procedure, actually, we probably need to try to find some way to get a governance document out of this that's a summary that's down on three to five pages. I know Nancy and I talked about trying to achieve that, that we wanted to give you folks a first crack at the document itself. And what I'm hoping we'll have is a, a discussion about this that does include the future, future elected officials as well. And also the folks that are, are going off, they have some opinions from their experiences here that could also be valuable. So I think that that is a great point to make. And so I think with that, we can have Nancy sort of walk you through the document. She prepared it, I think, in concert with the city attorney and by comparing it to lots of other documents that she gathered from around the state, so.
Yes, so before you tonight are the rules of procedure for your consideration. And I agree that it would be a good thing for the next commission to look at these as well. And I also agree with Mr. Fraser that having the voice of experience to go through it and, and see because you can't always anticipate the questions that you might have related to the procedures for meetings. Section one of the charter provides that the city commission adopt rules for the government of its members and its proceedings. And previously, the city commission had adopted Roberts Rules of Order for its meeting conduct. And frequently, there have been questions that have arisen throughout meetings and so forth where either the mayor would just make a decision about it or there was consensus among you to do it this way or that. And so these rules would try to put, put in place procedures for you so that you could refer to them instead of having to make decisions off the cuff. So the, but they were developed by the attorneys office and other resources. And they attempt to address many of your concerns. So since they're your rules, they're here for your consideration. And I'm just here to answer any questions you might have. If you want to just simply begin by looking at the, the resolution itself, which is the rules, and bring forward your questions, we'll be happy to look at them with you.
Yeah, I think maybe that's all we need to proceed. No requests to speak, I'm sure there'll be some. I'm gonna, what I'm gonna suggest is maybe you look at these section by section and discuss them on a section by section basis so that we don't get spread all over the place. Any questions here? Oh, go ahead, David, you want to start something? Sure. Why, why don't we invite, yeah, Kathy and Danny, why don't you, why don't you come on and move up there? Sure.
Poor Karen.
You, you, you can come chase the police, they won't up there. So. Getting Kathy on board here. Okay, starting with section one, authority and purpose. Is there any question about that? Well, excuse me, section two. I've got under E minutes.
Compelling attendance in subsection E. What does the city charter say about that, about how it can tell commissioners to attend? You send its chief over with a crowbar?
Actually, it's, it's almost voted there. It's almost voted there, as it says in section fifty.
Is there anything else? Section, section E. Issue for me on seven. As James and Cita as well, if you recall.
Pretty straightforward there. You'll notice that we did include the E two, that the minutes for executive sessions are kept permanently. That's in the rules as well as by resolution.
Then we had an issue about the time, the wish, recordings are kept. The issue, the issue here is, to me, is this, that the written, the written minutes are very abbreviated and we don't really know, there's not really a record of the more detailed discussions we had. I think this came before us before, within this, this body. And I, I think we had a problem with it, did we not, Jim?
I think we, we did pass a new resolution about retention of executive session minutes. And my recollection, although we have to go back to the regular session minutes, is that wasn't there a discussion about the technology for recording was such that it would be possible to efficiently, efficiently to store even executive session minutes permanently in recorded form?
Yes, and it doesn't act, the resolution only says to just, it needs to be kept. So if it's kept by resolution, sorry. By resolution or, sorry, but, but it needed to be, the, the recording, it is either by recording or by written minutes. And so we chose to keep it by the recording, a digital permanent record of the, of the recording.
Saying shall be returned a minimum of twelve months.
We're not talking, these are not talking about the regular minutes, not the executive session.
Yeah, I understand that, but I thought our discussion also included the regular minutes.
No, I didn't think it did. It, it, the, the regular minutes are kept by, however, we do, because we have the, the video, we do keep that on a permanent basis.
Okay, is.
Permanent meaning?
Permanent. Permanent.
I'm wondering whether, I wonder if we could have a statement to that effect in this.
Sure could.
Yeah, okay, good. That's the thing I have there in section, method of your section. Anything else in section two? Section three. Under C, and there may not be an issue with it, but under C, if you go, I guess, to the second sentence, there are no form of votes may be taken on work session items, although commissioners may be pulled in order to seek consensus on any matters under discussion at a work session. There's nothing indicating that it's not a decision-making process. And generally, when we come to a consensus, it's for somebody to pursue something. But it's not, it's not a formal action on our part to do so. And I don't know if that wording really encompasses that. I, I've got some longer wording here, but I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's necessary.
Could we even change the wording to seek direction?
Well, that, yeah, for the purpose of giving direction to the city manager, city attorney, yeah.
Direction and no consensus, yeah.
Yeah, it's, the consensus on giving direction or something of that nature. To make it really clear, we're not talking about a true decision-making process.
We can add in something similar to no form of votes may be taken on work session items, although commissioners may be pulled in order to give direction to the city manager. Perfect.
Something of that nature, I think, would be better. Makes it clearer that we're not really making a decision at the commission.
Do we have, are we doing questions on the screen?
Yeah, yeah, I, I.
The agenda for the work session shall be prepared by the city manager. Still C here.
Okay, go ahead.
So the agenda shall be prepared by the city manager based on the following, by the mayor or any member. I thought we were doing it by the majority of a quorum that, so we don't, in other words, don't have, if I have five items, Rocky has five. Did I, did I misread that or doesn't say that? Well, I, I don't know what section, because I don't have the thing, so I'm on C.
C one.
Under, under section three. So, you know, how do we place items on an agenda for either a work session or a city?
That's, that's coming up later on where it addresses that, how, how I can, the agenda.
But for the work session, even because the work session should still be a majority.
I don't know.
Whoops, now I made a screen.
No, we didn't make, I don't know.
Well, that's something you can decide, Adam. Oh, Mr. Fraser?
Need to share the record, guys? Okay. Go ahead. Well, really, this document is trying to put into place the standard law and the practices and the charter and all of that together. There are really only two ways you can formally get something on any meeting of the council. And that's either work session or for a regular council or commission meeting. First is by the will of the majority of the commission. And you have expressed that will through consent before, when one member has an idea of something they want to. Sometimes you express your consent by a failure to object in some cases. So it's sort of a consensus that you reach. So I don't have a problem with that language in our consensus. Also, in that last point, when you change the wording to direct the city manager, when you direct the manager to do something, it's sort of the same thing. Only the commission majority can direct the manager to do something. And so, but many times, the manager will see or hear things from one or more of you individually and say, does anybody have a problem with that? And nobody expresses an objection, so by consent, we end up doing it. I end up taking that direction, it's obvious. For example, that Rocky has passion about ermiting or urgos. So that wouldn't be something I would necessarily need. I already know how he feels about that, so it's, I don't wanna say it, but that's really the two ways that you're doing it. But, but the consent that you're developing comes from the will of the majority. And so whether it's a work session now and work session items under the charter, it's the manager's responsibility to bring forward to you things that your city needs to deal with. And in a given week, that might be something that none of you are aware of, but I know, oh, this is happening. It's kind of an urgent matter, I better get this on the agenda and get it in front of you. So you want to leave the manager to the discretion to bring those things to you that, that only the manager may be aware of. And at the same time, recognize that your majority can be by an official vote or by consent. If you ever get to that point when you're in conflict, let's say two of you want something on the agenda, but there isn't a consensus. And the other three do not want it on the agenda, no matter what. Well, then there has to be a vote. And the majority vote to place something on the agenda is actually, that's the state law. That's what prevails. Your rules here are simply designed to be guidelines for how you go about doing this.
That's not implied, remember that. All items directed by the mayor or any member of the commission to be listed on the agenda.
Now, see, that is a lower standard, but if the majority still comes forward and says, we don't want it on the agenda, I mean, the majority is what's gonna adopt these rules.
I personally don't have any problem with it. Boy, it's true. I mean, I think, I think if, if one person wants to have something on the work session, then they ought to bring it up. If the rest of the commission then doesn't want to pursue it, they don't have to pursue it. I was gonna suggest that, that to lead into that, the agenda for the work session shall be prepared by the city manager based on the following. And these are ors, these are ands. That is, it's not, these are not all jointly there. And I don't know if we need anything in the wording to indicate that, but any of these would qualify something going on the work agenda. And I think that's probably pretty clear. Anybody else? Under presiding officer, there was just one issue. And that's in the absence of the mayor and the president. If a quorum of the commission, if a quorum, if a quorum of the commission be present, the senior member of the commission shall preside. You can have more than one senior. If you're talking about time on the commission, I would say then the quorum decides on the, the personnel preside, presides. And if you've got a quorum, you've got three people, they can make the decision among themselves as who's to preside. But a senior member, we could have all three of them be senior members.
The next sentence is, is clarify that. It says that there is no senior, no one senior member of the commission, commissioners shall choose by vote, a president.
That's true. I would suggest, though, why not just let the quorum decide?
If that's what the commission wishes?
Uh, does anybody disagree?
Um.
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
The word, wording of the sentence, yeah, okay. On, on preservation of the order. We're talking about the presiding officer, that preserves order in decorum, the strange attacks on the personalities or impugning of commissioners' motives. I think citizens, it also has to be put in there in addition to citizen, uh, commissioners, that is, we uh, uh, we need to, we need to show the same kind of respect to the citizens that are here speaking to us and uh, uh, Nancy, you can work on the editing of that, but it's not only commissioners' motives, the citizens addressing us here, uh, we don't appear their motives either. Later on, there, do we have sergeant's orders? We have the police officer here.
I mean, this is automatically assumed.
Okay. Uh, in the absence of the police officer, we have to have anyway, if that's understood, that's okay.
They stab people with their giddy.
Yeah, so, like, I guess. Uh, I don't know if there's a way we designate that, because we don't, we have forms, yes.
Is there another word for sergeant of arms? We can come up.
Police.
Yeah. We can, we can run out that terminology there.
If you could, I mean, I think we need somebody like that. I think there's been cases where we had to remove people from here. And I presume it was a member of the police force that did so. Uh, but, you know, maybe some
Because it's station.
David Fraser has something else.
I was just gonna suggest to you that the, that the mayor, whoever the presiding officer is at that time, has the authority to ask, uh, the chief or anybody else, any of the city's officers, to maintain order. So you have that without saying All, all I'm saying is you don't need to be that specific. The sergeant-at-arms thing is something that's left over from Robert's Rules of Order and many cities, by the way, I was gonna say this at the beginning, they, they choose Robert's Rules of Order almost by default. It's this thick, for those of you who enjoy a nice read, it's this thick. And some of this stuff comes out of, you know, sixteenth century England, and it doesn't have a whole lot of relevance to what you do. And this document, I praise you Nancy for getting it down under fifteen pages. But it's, you know, it's designed to be more of your operational standard and that, so that Robert's Rules of Order, that's where sergeant-at-arms, you'll see that kind of stuff in there, but you don't necessarily need that in your rules.
Okay, um, any, any other comments on section two? I assume section four or section five?
That's how she shortened it.
There's nothing, I can hear unless it is a section four.
What is the next page?
Yeah.
Bottom of page four. Section four.
Oh, oh, there is, I just, anyway. Might jump over to section four, my apologies. Uh, uh, any, any more questions on section four?
Section five, then.
Any questions on section five? Well, I, I was just gonna say, I think, I think there are only two things in the charter that the mayor is able to do. And one of them is to determine the order of the agenda. They can't do anything about what's on the agenda, but they can determine the order of it. And I know this here under A is, the order of business may be changed, uh, or items added or deleted by majority of the vote of the commission. I don't have anything with adding or deleting, but I wish to preserve my charter that I could do, I can control the order. I don't control it, but I control the order of it. And I think, I think that is in the charter.
I'll look into that and add the language there.
And then you can tell me if I'm wrong.
Okay.
Sure you will. This is, uh, B on the consent agenda, this is one thing that has bothered me a little bit on my agenda, that, that consent agendas in the past. The consent agenda that contains, uh, routine items that are generally not controversial. I would like to add and have no budgetary impact. Uh, because oftentimes, we do have listed there the budgetary impact. And, and, and even though it's something that the commission would have no problem with, I, I think we have to call those things out so the public knows that we're actually taking on an action in which there is a budgetary impact. So, if it's budgetary impact, none, like the minis are and so forth, that's one thing, but is there an issue there? You don't like it?
Well, I don't, I don't think you're gonna like it, because, uh, what that means is that there's gonna be an awful lot of things on your agenda, some of them are almost de minimis. Uh, they could be things that are eight hundred dollars, they're, I mean, even, I mean, technically, even preparing the minutes does have a budgetary impact, so that's such a broad statement that I, I wouldn't recommend that you use that. You still have the discretion, of course, to pull things off, and you frequently do that when you and then there may be other things that you know, let's say they might have a twenty-five thousand dollar or fifty thousand dollar budget impact, but it's been talked to death. And there is absolutely no controversy about it, well, then you're, if you can't have that on your consent calendar, and pretty soon your meetings are like, you know, they get longer and longer, and it's hard to control after, after that. So I probably wouldn't hamstring myself if I were in your shoes.
Doug?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I thought, um, one of the things was, what, what is your authority to make decisions without, uh, commission, twenty-five thousand or fifty thousand? Strictly, yeah, so, I, I agree with Mr. Fraser on this one. Broader is better than
Uh, any other things on section five? I think, I think, I think, I think we're fine, no? That, that one I just mentioned, it's in five. Go ahead. Section six committees, go ahead.
Um, a couple of years ago, I raised, um, with Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Fraser, um, a point that I think, um, could be addressed in this section, but isn't. Um, and I don't know if it's, um, addressed in the charter. And that is, um, when a term begins, um, in a transition year, where the one mayor is leaving and another mayor is coming in, as we are with today's now. Does a term for a planning commission seat or a transition advisory committee seat, is that person appointed by the outgoing mayor or the incoming mayor? I, my preference is the incoming mayor, because I think the will of the electorate should be reflected as, you know, as much as possible. Um, but I, you know, Mr. Sullivan, the city's in a little bit, but I don't think we reached any further base on that. Um, and because, you know, the deadline has now passed, where all the I think we need to resolve that question.
We, we did contact the city attorney regarding that, and he indicated that, um, the incoming mayor would be the one but, well, let's maybe back up, there, there isn't a vacancy until it's taken. And so, uh, even though we can advertise and, and expect to fill that and, and get applications from the public, um, the incoming mayor would be the one to make the appointment. Um, but the outgoing mayor can be in, you know, can be involved in the process and as far as the applications, um, and so forth. But the incoming mayor will actually make the appointments. And, and, and if, and if there are people, um, who are, are seated, uh, so December thirty-first, but we haven't had a chance to get it on the agenda or whatever, they, they still can, um, be a part of that committee in January or until that seat is appointed, even though their term has expired.
And so that's the same thing with, then with seats that the commission as a whole appoints? That it's the new commission in January that will
Yes, yes.
All terms.
Right, mhm.
Okay, then that, that, that does not have to be clarified, that does not have to be clarified here.
If you can leave our microphones off.
I didn't turn mine off, by the way.
Oh.
Yeah, I wonder if we turned it off.
I wonder if we turned it off.
I don't know.
So, that was Section six? Section seven? Section eight?
I'm glad to see that this electronic communications has been addressed. I've certainly been in the newspaper a lot with other city councils being a little more proactive about it.
Yes.
So, that's a good thing.
Section nine? Under A seven, I just have a query here, I just look for clarifying, for clarifying to any person entitled to participate in the hearing may also submit written testimony in addition to or lieu of speaking before the commission. Is it posted the, the time by which this has to be done, that it's before or at the time of the hearing? They can make their submission before
They might submit something for the record, it would need to be submitted in a timely manner.
Yeah.
Um, and those, I, I don't know that we would necessarily have to put that in here as far as the, the time seen that specifically.
Maybe somebody walks out and has made a, a verbal testimony, decides to write it up and submit it. It doesn't become part of the record.
If, if the public hearing's closed, you, if you take all testimony, close the public hearing, and then the next day someone submits written testimony, we wouldn't accept it for a
I understand, and I'm just wondering if in that one sentence, that should be clarified.
We can add something that would clarify that.
And it's not to clarify, it's almost to us, it's to clarify to the citizens. Section nine? Any other things? I had a B, uh, capital B, number two, lowercase b. Um, we're talking about, um, the participation of the commissioner. The one that concerned me just a little bit here, and I think, I think maybe we can deal with it in a certain way. A commissioner owns property within an area entitled to receive notice at the public hearing. Oftentimes, the area entitled to receive notice is in fact a neighborhood association. Um, now, I understand later on, we say, well, if you don't have a quorum, then you can, you can default this, but one, two, three, four of the current, uh, of the next commission are from the local neighborhood association. And all, all the time that I've served on the commission, the majority of the commission have been from the local neighborhood association. I think, what I, I think what needs to be done here is to call that particular neighborhood association out. Uh, I know many of the commissions I had in the past, not so much currently, but, you know, I've gone to a lot of neighborhood association meetings. I think what we ought to have here is some kind of statement that when when a neighborhood association is discussing an issue that has come up a notice, that the commissioner needs to excuse himself from that particular meeting, and that, and it does not constitute ex parte contact. Uh, uh, so that the person, the, the person's in the neighborhood association has not had any ex parte contact regarding the issue as before them and can look at, look at it presumably in an unbiased fashion, not having participated in any of the neighborhood associations in which this has been presented. I think the general wording there is okay, but the fact that the neighborhood association itself or the, uh, the entity that's in notice, I think, presents a problem to the commissioners.
And, and, under, under B, um, even under, um, the, the quasi judicial hearing process, and before you, you know, we look at ex parte con conflict of interest and bias. So, just because you own property within a notice area or even next door to it, as long as you can answer that under the, under the ORS requirements for ex parte bias and conflict of interest, you're okay to hear it.
But these statements too, though, says no commissioner shall participate in a discussion or vote on a quasi judicial matter when?
I, I think B, the way this is written exceeds the requirement to hear a land use notice that would, uh, uh, under the rules we operate under.
I guess my concern is should be B be a little bit reword, reworded or reflected? The answer is yes, it should be reworded.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just wondering if that's, um, a mandatory state law, that state law could clarify for us? Maybe that's a question for the city attorney?
Yeah, I'm not sure where B, where B came from, we could certainly look into that.
Talk, maybe talk to the attorney about that, because it does really limit us in some ways.
Right.
And, and under the law, what the, there's a fair and impartial rendering, so I think the most important thing for us is to have the city attorney look at that provision and see, make sure we're not writing a higher standard than the state law requires, so Nancy can make her note of that and we'll follow it.
Any questions, more questions on the line, section one?
Um, yeah. Um, I might like to hear some, uh, examples of, uh, of what this would be, no commissioners shall participate in discussion or vote on a quasi judicial matter when. Uh, there's been many commissioners and, including myself, that have been at neighborhood associations, and I maybe haven't voted on things. But how, just give me an example of what this is.
Well, if you had a specific thing that was going through the planning commission, only to the city commission that had to do with land use within neighborhood associations being discussed at the neighborhood association. You would probably want to excuse yourself, so you're not, and, and you're not dealing with an ex parte contact.
So, things like the public works facility, Tony wants to talk, or the Atkinson redo, all those kinds of things you probably shouldn't have been at neighborhood associations. Discussing, discussing it with our neighborhood if we were on city commission.
Right.
Interesting.
I, I, I guess, I don't, I have a little bit of a, of a dissenting view on that, because surprise. The, the, um, the, the, and this came up during Atkinson, actually, the, the thing about ex parte, I think it's limited to facts. I mean, if, if I'm, if I'm at a, at a McLaughlin neighborhood association and there's, there's just opinions about how ugly this or how beautiful this is, that's not ex parte. Um, if, but any, so any facts that come out of a neighborhood association meeting, I mean, that's, that's a simple declaration of, I learned fact X, fact Y, or fact Z at a neighborhood association meeting, and then you just declare it as ex parte at the hearing, you're fine. So I don't, I don't, I don't necessarily think that, um, because I'd probably wind up never going to a neighborhood association meeting.
I guess, I, I think you still need clarification, though, in, in Harold's
Tony goes to say something, too.
No, go ahead. No, he will, but, but I'm just following right to what, what Jim's saying. Because the neighborhoods, uh, the neighborhood associations are entitled to receive notice, and we're supposed to excuse ourselves.
Yeah.
And that, and so we need to, we need to have that clarified, your wording's something.
I think I, I, first, an example, we require all CRE apps to go to a neighborhood association.
Okay.
So, every CRE app that comes forward is a potential land use application that this commission potentially hears, either through the hearing process or on appeal. Uh, the second issue concerning if you go to a neighborhood association and they're discussing a land use application that is going to be before you or does end up before you, and for example, there are discussions about it that the commissioners are a part of, and then you declare that ex parte conflict. And then most likely what Mr. Sullivan is gonna say is, can you make a decision on this land use application based on the facts that you hear tonight? And not based on those facts that are not in the record that the entire commission was entitled to, and if you can answer that in the affirmative, you're fine to hear to hear the case. And then third thing is, I would agree, we can have our attorney look at this and kind of spell out, um, because ex parte bias and conflict of interest, um, you know, conflict of interest is pretty easy to prove, but, you know, bias and ex parte, that's up to you as commissioners to determine.
It's just a, it's just a B would imply exclusion from, from our B, and we don't want that.
Correct.
Okay, any more questions on that particular section? All right.
Are we on project? Section ten.
Yeah, that's the last section. Anyway, the twenty-five rest discusses further what's new commission is solid and so. And I thought it was beneficial, it needs some of these things out there ahead of that.
What, what we'll do, uh, commissioners will have the city attorney particularly pay attention to the section you just, uh, you folks just reviewed. Then Nancy will probably go in and show the red line changes, and we'll get a draft emailed out to you in advance. And then probably straight away after the first line, you know, the new commission will try to get this, uh, on approval. I don't know if the city has ever had, uh, these rules, but I think your charter has required it for decades. So I would say congratulations, you've taken your first step. It's, uh, it's an important step, I mean, it's real important for these to be your rules because they're out there.
Anything else before you go to the next agenda?
The next one's a little more.
I'm following the rules and waiting till I'm called on. Well, um, you know, we talk about keeping all our minutes and our recordings in perpetuity or whatever, but one of the biggest problems that we have not solved is that our sound system is so remiss. And if you go online and want to listen to these meetings, half the time they're bleeped out. And either I think that people need to wear headsets and mics, or, you know, if a commissioner is outspoken, he wants to sit like this, it doesn't, you know, half of it's hidden this, and I, I think, you know, here we make all this fuss to keep everything forever, and you can't even hear half of it. I would like to see that worked on.
That's why we keep it, well.
I don't know what can be done, if it's a technical thing, but it's a consistent problem.
And on, on television too, still.
Yes, well, people.
Um, almost as much as before.
Oh, we do.
Well, it's convenient to get close to the mic when we want to, and convenient to not get close to it when we don't want to.
That's right.
I don't think it's, it's a long drive, I think it's just a case of probably communicate and sit back and so forth. I don't think, I, I, I hear that complaint about me all the time, I'm not trying to not get recorded.
Well, maybe, um, headsets is the order of the day. What, head, headsets generally require, uh, wireless and batteries, and batteries run out, and it, there's a lot more issues when it comes to battery operated headsets. Um, you know, if we turn the mics on and everyone leaves them on, that eliminates some of that problem of, you know, forgetting to turn the mic on or whatever. And just being conscious of it, you know, as commissioners, it's just really important to make sure, to remember what you're doing, that, you know, you're creating a record that's going to be kept permanently, and it's really important to make sure that it's communicated, so.
And then you should all remember them moving forward.
Yeah.
Thank you, thanks for your comment.
We're ready for the next thing, I think, yeah, the next agenda item.
For a redismiss?
No, you signed up for four years.
You can re dismiss, uh, because the boards and commissions already, yeah, well, somebody will be seen, you know? So I mean, I think there's, you, you, I think there's, might want to stay here. I think that applies.
Thank you.
So minimum for boards and commissions.
Okay. Um, before you tonight is, this is a live document that has been actually on my personal goals for the last few years, as well as these other rules. Um, the city does not have a formal training program for board and commission members, so a manual was developed to help educate them on the form and the function of city government. Um, the manual explains briefly the purpose of each board, and it educates the members on public meeting rules, and generally answers many questions related to meeting procedures, uh, well, some of what you just, uh, talked about with your rules. Uh, but it, but for the citizen who doesn't have any idea of what goes on in the chambers, it's just really helpful to be able to read about it, so that, that's why this was prepared. It's being brought forward tonight for consideration along with your rules, since the rules are referenced in the manual. Um, if you do decide to move forward with the board in this manual, um, I think it would be, I think it would still, we could still address it appropriately. Anyway, um, the, we're here to answer any questions that you have regarding the manual as well. So if you, um, the, the intent of the manual is to distribute it to any new board or commission member, and as well as to anyone who just wants to read about, um, what it's like to be on a commission, uh, what's involved with the process. We will po- post this on, on the city's website as well, so, uh, there'll be some training for, for people, um, who don't want a hard copy. And if you take a look at page three, the table of contents, it, it goes through, there's three pages of, of what's in this manual. Pretty detailed content, so, um, we're here to answer any questions, if you want to just briefly go through the manual. Here to help you.
I think it hurts, Rocky has a question.
Well, I wanted to read this one section because it goes against pretty much everything I've heard for two years. Uh, well, not completely against it. On occasion, the mayor, oh, bottom, uh, last three lines on page seven. Um, on occasion, the mayor or a commissioner may use the less formal process of making a request or suggestion directly to a department director. And I think we've kind of not really done that, it's, you know, the, the majority. We've, we've had that discussion so many times where, um, for the most part, you're going through the city manager. And so I think this, this is not as clear as I've heard in the last couple of years.
Yeah.
So, um, I don't know what we think about that, but it doesn't seem consistent with what we're really doing, but.
We can, we can rework that.
Let me, I, I want to make the comment, there are occasions when I see something that's really, for example, a public force issue, maybe, maybe it's a shooter or something. And I, and I, and I do send the email to the part, the department director, I think I always remember to put a car, a copy, I hope I do.
Right.
Almost always today, Fraser. Uh, but, you know, there are, there, I think that occasion is, is correct, because if, if you see a storm, uh, if he has a commissioner having notices and storm being plugged up, I don't think you have to tell David Fraser about it.
You know, what we might do is put, the preferred method is to contact the manager however, or, and then we'll put a however in there so that they can, when there's a situation like that, that maybe you can also contact the director.
Those are the kind of pages I think of when it's so specific, it's not that clear.
Well, and there's a little difference between a request and a suggestion.
Well, uh, I'd like to stay away from language that would imply that city commissioners can direct staff. So, for instance, hey, there's a problem out there, but David thinks it should be handled different than the department head, so, um, it's, he's the person we, uh, hire and report to, and, uh, so we, I'm sure they'll fix the language. Work on that.
Or, I mean, if it is that instead of just directly to the department, I mean, what's coffee to the manager or something? I mean, that just needs to mention that we want to let both know.
Um, let me, and maybe it's still over here, we had a case, and I think the current commissioners will remember it, where we had an issue before one of the, uh, crap, uh, before one of the advisory committees, uh, we actually saw the minutes of some, uh, it was a capersia item, and the commission gave a specific direction. But the, the advisory committee that was, uh, discussing this thing to begin with, there were a couple of the members that were saying, uh, that they don't feel that they should be involved in public comment issues. And in fact, if there are issues that are directed to a given, uh, the advisory committee is responsible for those issues, they need to be aware that they have to listen in public too. Uh, and, uh, I don't know if there's any, if there's anything in terms of, in, in terms of this document that indicates that they operate in, in the same way when there are issues they're making decisions about, and they're not making the decisions, but they're making, giving advice to us on the decisions that we might make. But they are, if the public comes to that body and wants to talk about them, they need to listen to what's being said. Um, and this came up in one major thing, that was before us, not too long ago. I think, I should say, not, there was a dialogue between the, the members of that advisory board, that is, others, others were saying, yes, we have to listen to them, but I'll be made it clear to them, that they're, 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 they, they have their, the public concerns as well, on those things that they're responsible for.
Okay. Um, I'll review what you just said and then see where, where we can insert something that might address that. How's that you?
What do you mean, was she there when, she's never not been there?
Yes, sir, I was there then.
You were there then.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay.
We're not one of the people I was referring to.
Um, can I just, like, talk about the organizational part, the committee rewards?
Yeah, yes, you may.
Thank you. And I wanted to just point out that the citizen involvement council actually does, um, fall in there under the city commission. And it was in, um, it was a, um, ministry to all of us a few months ago, as you might remember. So it does well to you guys.
Well, that's one of the bodies that the meritism makes a bunch.
Mayor might think about that.
No, I don't think I want to think.
Just so you know, it actually.
There is representation from each neighborhood association, and the neighborhood associations make the decision as to who's going to represent them with their body, and that's the way it should be.
Yes. But it is one of our committees.
Right. It's him, eh?
It's in there.
It's, no, it's, yeah, she's, she's, she's making note of it, that is, you know.
Yes, I'm putting it out in my internal admission.
Right. Any other comments? All right, I believe we have next on agenda. City manager in the report, is that right? Is there something I'm missing?
So I have one question, um, you, you direction for, do you wish to move this forward to the next meeting for adoption, or?
I, 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 I'm a man's opinion of the, of the new, of the new people here, I, I mean, um, the, 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 whether you would want to act on this or not. And this hasn't happened yet, but if you, would you have any angst at this one, at this game to the, the current commission? Good option.
No.
Okay. Yeah.
Then it'll be on the next agenda.
Jim.
You already pointed out as the mayor.
I know, I don't.
Mr. Commissioner? I, I also want to invite all of you, uh, when, sometimes when you look at these rules and procedures, things come to you later.
Yeah.
Uh, particularly for some of our new members who I don't feel like had maybe a full opportunity to look at this.
Right, you didn't know they could move all those.
Exactly, exactly, so they have a free, free pass. So what I want to do is invite all of you to send Nancy and I your comments, if you, if any come to you. If they don't, we'll make the changes you had here, and you'll see those, uh, coming forward, but if something occurred to you, or if you have a question about any of it, call either one of us and we'll work with you, make sure it is included in the issue.
Is that your report, is that on the agenda?
No, I have two, a couple. Um, first of all, uh, some of you have asked me off and on in the last couple of months about Safeway's application through the planning commission. Uh, as I understand it, that project now has been approved by the planning commission. They started out with fourteen or fifteen exceptions to the code, and it was a difficult process because, uh, I'm not, I'm not so sure it was difficult because of the local affiliate, but more of the, the national scope of it was a little bit challenging, and they, of course, encounter lots of different code provisions around the country when they develop a store. And I just want to give kudos to our community development director, Tony Conkle, for en- enforcing your code, our community's code, and making sure that they complied with it. And it wasn't always easy, and things, things actually got percolated to my office as well, and we had meetings, and, uh, your staff did indeed respect your code, and I think that's, um, largely why the project ended up being approved, so, wanted to mention that. Um, also, the citizens' police academy, our first citizens' police academy finishes up a week from today, or tomorrow, a week from tomorrow. Um, they're going to try to do one a year, uh, after this, this is really a neat thing because, well, for some reason, I won't go into that, but it's, uh, I really appreciate the chief's work on, on that. Also, they have two new police officers starting, have started this week, uh, you'll meet them at your next commission meeting. Uh, this is another one of the lateral recruitments that we did, and these officers, uh, each have nearly ten years of experience in another municipality, so we're really glad that we're getting these experienced people to come work for us here in Oregon City. Um, also, I want to ask Scott Archer to talk a little bit about some tree trimming at the Carnegie and a planting or two that's happening over there.
Commissioners, uh, this is just a, an informational thing, so you're aware, um, at this point, it's planned for later in the, in the week, later part of this week, uh, that we'll be doing some, uh, um, pretty significant limbing and sort of cleaning out of, like, dead limbs and things like that in our, in our trees at the, at the Carnegie Center. Um, additionally, there will be, uh, a removal going on, the, the, the maple tree that is basically overhanging the, uh, spray pool is at this point is about seventy to eighty percent dead, it's been dying for the last couple of years, and that is planned for removal. We do plan to replace that tree specifically at that site with a, uh, with an appropriate replanting of some type, uh, within weeks after that one is removed. Um, there's a broader discussion that's occurring about the replanting plan at the Carnegie Park, um, that I'll be, uh, actually coming to a, uh, McLaughlin Neighborhood Association meeting in January to talk about, and there, there's some work underway, we know that there's, I know that there's a little bit of angst in the community about, you know, that, that, the, as you all know, we've had the Dutch elm disease issue that we've had to slowly, we've taken a number of the, um, the large trees out, um, and we, we do have a replanting plan, we're beginning to, um, look at implementing that. We've also taken a look at, kind of in conjunction with this, but, but, uh, we've taken a look at the, it was suggested at a, uh, public hearing related to the, to the Danielson's property, the Safeway project, that we take a look at the plantings up there that are supposed to be removed, and look at maybe some reuse of that, and we're, we're in the process of, process of evaluating whether we can potentially replant some of those, those trees and some of the other plants in, in some of our parks, possibly Carnegie, but to be real careful at Carnegie because it's so significant, and the, um, you know, the canopy there and, and how it has to be replanted to make it appropriate is, is, uh, we just want to be real careful about that, so we're going to be talking about that. But anyway, the, the work that'll be done, so that, that you're aware, and should you field any inquiries from the community members about that at the Carnegie site, will be going on. A- as of now, it's planned for later this week, uh, unless, unless anything changes because of weather or something to that effect, so.
Just that. Um, one last thing, you, you folks know that I'm your representative on the Tri-City Advisory Committee, along with, uh, the city manager of Westland and Gladstone. And, um, I know some of you are aware that, uh, Wes had planned to put two large forest manes on top of the pedestrian bridge, uh, linking, uh, Gladstone and Oregon City. And we did ask some questions about that, I had a discussion with the county administrator and his staff about it last week. Um, I also discussed it with my other two, uh, colleagues on the Tri-City Advisory Board, and we were going to talk about that issue on, at our meeting this week. And I just learned a few minutes ago that they canceled the meeting. Um, however, I also found out from our public records director that she received a call yesterday from one of the employees at Tri-City, and they've now said, telling us that they've abandoned the idea of putting pipes on the pedestrian bridge, and that they're going to look for alternatives. Uh, I did seek confirmation from the administrator, but I wasn't able, he wasn't able to get back to me yet. Uh, so I think that's good, but then, but then, I don't know what the alternatives are, so I don't want to, you know, get real excited, but I do think that that's important to. But I do think that that's important to step in the right direction. So. Um, then I want to say just a couple of things about the retreat and then invite, um, input from folks. We, you have the dates, I think, at the last Saturday, last Friday and Saturday, uh, and maybe even part of Sunday, depending on how much work we get done of January. We have Professor Peter and Susan Glazer that are going to come up for the first day and a half of the retreat and, uh, teach a workshop on, uh, group dynamics and communication. I think you're going to find, these are some of the best experts in the world on this topic. They're both professors from the University of Oregon. They, um, are sort of famous for settling the dispute between Orrin Hatch and Ted Kennedy. Um, if they can help them, they can help us. Um, they also work with the Japanese parliament and the White House and New Zealand, elected officials around the world. And they're really, and they're here, they're in Eugene actually. So, um, they're, I've seen their trainers, I've had their courses before. Some of our staff have had, I think Maureen used to live in Eugene and she knows of them and has had some, had some, had some of the courses. They taught a workshop this year at LOC as well. Um, so I think you're really going to enjoy that. And I also think it'll, it, it helps you in every relationship in your life, actually. So, for me, that's important for a personal reason as well as a professional one. So I think we'll enjoy that. Then the second half of, of this event, we're planning for your actual goal setting to get into the sort of a nuts and bolts of what your priority is going to be. We'll be bringing forth the, the, uh, goals, the broader goals that this commission has had and sort of tweaked over the years that still seem pretty valid. We'll bring those forward to you. Uh, but we aren't seeking ideas. Uh, we have several ideas on the staff that we think things you folks need to be thinking about. Whether or not you'll include them on your list, it'll be up here, but we, we feel like we have a responsibility to bring forward some of those things. Some of them are things that you've already mentioned here tonight about facilities, um, you know, everything. Last year, I think you had things on there like business lessons, uh, that, that made it. There were a lot of things actually on your list last year that were beyond the capacity of the organization to achieve. So hopefully this year we can be maybe a little more realistic about what our resource capacity is. Um, so I'm looking forward to that, but I'd love to have input from any of you that have opinions where, where we've got reserved the Ainsworth House to hold the event there. So, that's what we've done so far.
Got a couple of comments there for commissioners?
I don't, I'm just curious if I, we could get just a couple second, um, update. I think some things are happening at the Erma Tinger House and I, I know you're not prepared to talk about that tonight, but I'd just a couple sentences to let me, to let us know what's going on.
Sure. I'm pretty sure you're talking about the window. So we've, uh, our contractor, um, Oculus Carpentry, I believe, is, uh, is the name of the company, is, has begun work as of, uh, this week on the window restoration project that I think you all are aware of that we've been planning for a while. It will be a, um, it's, it's, it's not a quick process. It's, it's very delicate and very specialized type of carpentry work. So, our contractor has begun the process of removing the windows. They go back to her shop and then they get, they get basically repaired and, you know, how, how that happens. Uh, so we've taken, as of today, I think we've taken, taken four windows out or the contractor has and there'll be more of that to come. Part of this is also kind of working with and around the activities that are going, going forward there. We've got the holidays coming up and there's some holiday events planned. So, there's some attention to that and that, that makes the coordination a little bit more, a little bit more tricky just in terms of not, not completely disrupting that, but also recognizing that we've, we've got to continue forward with this work. So, anyway, the work is moving. The contract, the contract goes through, I think it's the end of February. So, you know, it depends if it takes the full amount of that time or not to do all of the work or, you know, it's, it's kind of done a little bit in some, in some pieces where things are taken out and then some are put back and it's just kind of this, this process like that. So. We're also, while we've been in there doing that, we've discovered a couple of other, of other issues that we're addressing, a, a ceiling issue and, um, and some things that we're just kind of looking at and we're doing a little bit of other repair at the same time. So we are, we're doing some, uh, getting some repair work done there.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you. Um, David, just to get back to the retreat, um, I'm, Ainsworth House sounded appealing to me because that were, that's where my first one was as a commissioner and I thought it was a very good, um, you know, site for a retreat.
Keep it working.
Yeah. One other thing that happened that retreat that I can't remember, but I don't, I don't have a recollection of having happened this January, was, um, kind of big picture economics. We had Joe Corcoran speak that retreat, um, to kind of like give us a, um, what the world looked like, you know, and how, you know, municipality functioning in, in the current economic trends. And I felt, I felt that was useful. I'd like to have something similar, um, I want to design up, you know, the colleagues too. Um, I think, I'd like to have, you know, Dr. Corcoran again. We'll tell him, um, there's another, um, guy who's more local, Charlie Stevens, who's, um, quite brilliant too. Who I'd like to throw out as a name and, you know, if the other commissioners have suggestions too. But just some economic rounding, I think would be really, really helpful for the retreat.
Okay. Well, let me, let me, uh, make an observation or maybe even a suggestion about that. The, uh, it's going to take about a day and a half to get through the Glazer training and then after that, we have about a half a day for the actual review of the goals and setting the priorities in there. The, uh, broader discussion, we could stay a little bit longer for the retreat and include that economic piece. Or as an alternative, we might be able to schedule here for a work session. Then even more people see the retreat, you're actually retreating from these chambers through a more private setting to work on those goals. If we do the economic discussion here in the chambers, then we can broadcast it and a lot more people can see it and maybe learn from it. So if we'd rather do that sort of toward the beginning of the year, um, and sometime in January, we can try to do that or we can try to get them to the retreat as sort of.
Let me ask you a question because I guess I'm not clear on something. Why does the Glazer function take a day and a half? That seems, that almost seems long.
Refer you to their website, but there, there are many pieces about how they teach you to build trust through conflict. What, what we've done, what we typically do in groups like this is we build distrust through conflict. So what we're going to do is they're going to develop a series of hypotheticals. They'll be calling each of you up and interviewing you, asking you questions about what you think is working well in the city, what isn't. And they will also be interviewing some of the staff to figure out, you know, what the, what the dynamics look like from their perspective. With the resultant goal, they're going to teach you a very specific set of skills that you can use in your deliberations that will probably lead to better decision-making and more trust in this group and also among this group and the staff. You can have a shorter version of the training. The one they taught at LOC was only about four hours, but you miss a lot of the, the pieces, um, of what they can do.
I'm just concerned, um, that whether we're going to have enough time for the actual goal-setting session.
That's why it may be two full days is that, well, it'll be two full days. I might try to get the, the Glazers haven't set their, uh, we haven't agreed on a curriculum yet. We just agreed on a limitation of a day and a half, but we could probably get that down to one day and then save a full day for. I'm a little bit concerned about that same thing, whether we're going to have enough time to do the goal setting. Because I think last year you had a, I, I might say a fairly cumbersome process that took about a day and a half or longer and you didn't do anything except the goals. So we're going to try to be a little more efficient this year and I could try to get the Glazers in a one-day curriculum and then, uh, save a full day for the other. We haven't decided, I haven't, haven't got enough detail yet to tell you, but that's sort of what we're thinking is two full days, whatever it takes to get what we need done in that two full days. But we wouldn't be successful if it came out there and you didn't have your goals.
Yeah.
And we just have to stay until we got it done and we don't want that to be more than two full days. So we may end up with one day with the Glazers.
Put myself in the, just was going, uh, so when you were talking there about the trees at Carnegie, one, one, one set of complaints I got, even from some of the, uh, people that were on the Park and Rec Advisory, uh, Committee at the time, was what they felt was relatively small caliber trees that would be used as replacement trees. I know there are some, some people whose expertise is to actually plant successfully larger caliber trees and, uh, you know, the, the conscious part of the area in which people are willing to sit is shrinking as the streets disappear because, uh, we all have even been on the shade that's there. And as we see those elms go, uh, it's probably not going to be as nice in place. And I realize that we're probably going to have a period where we don't have the shade canopy, but, uh, there's been concerns expressed that we could have had larger trees planted there, that more expense, but still have larger trees planted there. So, it will take us a long to reach a nice stature. So just, um, and then I see, that is almost, yeah.
I've limited opportunities to speak, so my, the, the schedule is gaining. Um, I just wanted to, uh, uh, comment on Mr. Fraser's, um, con, or his comment on having Joe Corcoran speak. And I'd hate to see the commission miss an opportunity to educate their other boards. And if you're going to do that, you should really invite Urban Renewal Commission that makes your investment decisions for the community to be as educated as you are. So I hate just, that's my only comment. I'm done.
Any more comments? Okay, so your session's over.